I can't now that we're unmuted. Maybe?
I can hear you.
Okay, alright. Uh, the time is now seven oh three PM and I will call this meeting to order, may we have roll call please?
Mayor Rieckel?
Here.
Pro Tim Knott?
Here.
Trustee Britnall?
Here.
Trustee Klaassen?
Here.
Trustee Flores?
Here.
Trustee Hamrahann?
Here.
Trustee Seifert?
Here.
Alright, can we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, be seated. Alright, the first item on tonight's agenda is public comments. Persons desiring to make a public comment on items not on the agenda, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program. Or Sheila, did you have any phone calls or emails in regards to non-agenda items?
I did not hear from anyone myself today, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
And there was nobody signed in at the podium.
Okay.
I don't show any raised hands, but I did get a phone call from a gentleman that said he was going to be there.
Okay. We don't have anybody signed in with us, so.
I did make him aware that if he wasn't there during public comments and we'd gone past that he was out of luck.
Okay, alright. Public comment is scheduled for seven oh five, which it is right now, so. I will go ahead and move on to the next agenda item. Which contains the consent agenda. It's the minutes of the July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two Board of Trustees meeting. And the renewal of the Retail Marijuana License for Rifle Remedies LLC, uh, doing business as Green Cross Silt. Anybody like to discuss either one of those or make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Alright. Uh, we have a motion by trustee Klaassen to approve the consent agenda, seconded by trustee Seifert. Halls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Halls opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thanks for coming up. You can stick around for the meeting if you'd like to. Alright.
Thank you.
Uh, the next item on the agenda is conflicts of interest. Any board members having any conflicts with agenda items tonight?
None here.
None here, Mr. Mayor.
None.
Got none? Uh, any staff or board agenda changes tonight?
Not here.
Um, if I could have five minutes before right around administrator and staff report for Panoramic Mesa. Just to give you a briefing on that and what might be coming.
And Mr. Mayor, I'd like to talk very briefly about the strategic planning report that should be at your seat tonight.
Alright. We'll just do both of those right before administrator and staff reports, if that's alright? Okay. I'm not sure where Planner Chain went to.
He's out in the hallway.
Here he comes.
Maybe? Saw a shadow moving. Alright, here he comes to join us, so. Uh, the next agenda item is the first reading of ordinance number thirteen, series twenty twenty-two. An ordinance of the town of Silt, Colorado amending zoning ordinance number nine, series of twenty thirteen, in developing, uh, and establishing planned unit development zoning for annexed land formerly known as the Divide Creek Center, and now commonly known as Reslinda Planned Unit Development. And I will turn this over to Planner Chain.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we're going to, we're going to the meeting pretty quickly tonight. Anyway, uh, this is the first reading, uh, for the ordinance and this is for the PUD zoning itself. So this is first reading of the ordinance number thirteen. And, um, I put together the draft of the ordinance using some other starting points. Uh, the PUD, if you, uh, I would suggest to you, if you want to talk about the zoning, talk about the zoning now. I have the PUD as Exhibit D in that and it's, um, it's just a separate attachment. Uh, easier to look at, easier to read, and sometimes easier to amend if you need to. It is basically the, uh, for the most part, the exact same zoning that you saw before. Um, it is not part of the rest of the zoning ordinance, it's not stuck in the body of it. One thing I did, and Doug Pratt here reviewed it. Uh, instead of having four or five pages of things that were written out, I made a chart just easier to see, uh, at one glance what the heights are in the various zone districts, what the densities are. And there are some clarifying notes at the bottom which were written throughout the text. About the only thing we did substantively from what you have seen in the past, was, uh, I suggested that the parking for individual lodging units be reduced from one point five per lodging unit to one space per lodging unit. And this, I was thinking more of a motel space or, you know, a multifamily thing, not a, not a single family house. It may be a, uh, short-term rental, which, you know, could be on a couple of the lots. So if you have questions on the zoning, I am here, Doug Pratt's here, and, um, I am not hooked up with my computer, so I'm not sure who else is attending. Uh, is Mitchell there? Is Chad?
Mitchell's on virtually and Chad was going to join virtual. Actually, I think it's just Mitchell.
Okay, and Sheila, is Michael Sawyer on the line?
Yes, Michael is and Mitchell is as well.
Okay, alright. Um, I did the draft of an ordinance, as I said, using a couple other, uh, examples. Uh, we need one tweak, just so you know, and that is if you look at page one on the fourth whereas from the bottom, uh, it says the town received an application from applicant on or about August fifteen, twenty thirteen, requesting to amend the Dixon Annexation B two Highway Business District zoning. And then it said by means of this Reslinda zoning and that, this Reslinda zoning should not be on there. It should be either by means of an application from Dixon, or should I say Divide Creek Center? Or just leave it, um, requesting to amend the Dixon Annexation B two Highway Business District zoning and. Uh, so those, and I am not aware of any other change that should be made in the text of the ordinance itself. Uh, Michael, you can address that if you had a chance to look at this in detail. And, um, with that, I guess I'd hand it over to board and see if they would like to discuss any aspects of the zoning.
Yeah.
Real, real quick, Mr. Mayor, just to put this in a little bit of context. So this is not the last opportunity you'll have to review, uh, this ordinance. Uh, at the next meeting, assuming that this passes on first reading tonight, uh, you'll be back looking at, uh, the same zoning ordinance on second reading, but it will be paired with, uh, a, a resolution to approve the annexation and involvement agreement. And, uh, if you recall from the last meeting, we had a fairly lengthy discussion about a whole host of development-related issues, trails, parks, uh, public improvements related items. Uh, those items you will see next as part of the amended and restated annexation agreement. Uh, and so, you know, you don't need to focus on those things today. You'll get an opportunity to examine those again in greater detail when we have the resolution in front of the board. Uh, and today's focus really is on the zoning and even with that, uh, you'll see this ordinance one, one time.
And Michael, did you see anything else in the ordinance itself? The language that needed to be tweaked or was questionable the way it was written?
I, I have a couple of questions for you, Mark, but I figured you and I can talk about those offline and if we need an edit to the language appropriate, we'll get that ready for second reading.
It's okay with me.
Good there.
I do have a list of, of questions, I don't know if anybody else does it, I'd like to go first. Um, my first one is, I didn't see any language pertaining to marijuana retail establishments being allowed or not allowed in this PUD.
I did not see that either and I thought they did not want to have a marijuana place. So I just took it at face value.
Mr. Mayor is, uh, we certainly can add language that calls that out as a prohibitive use. Going back for seven or eight years now, uh, to when Planner Aloys was interpreting the PUD work. PUD, uh, it's for the PUDs in town. She took the position that PUD zoning did not allow for marijuana uses unless it was specifically called out. And we have continued with that interpretation. But of course, those were all PUDs that were passed long before the legalization acts. Uh, and so it, it wouldn't hurt to have a prohibited use section in here that calls out, you know, marijuana cultivation and retail sales.
Okay.
Should we also go with hemp?
Well, that was my, my second one was the ag use that can remain on the property. Um, is, would hemp and marijuana be allowed underneath the remaining ag use?
I, I think.
Go ahead, Mark.
I thought hemp would. But marijuana.
My inter- my interpretation is, is if, if they desire to use a portion of the property for agriculture, but both as a matter of state law and as a matter of the town's code, uh, industrial hemp is simply an agricultural prop. But that is different than marijuana. Uh, now, we can certainly, again, include language that cultivation of marijuana is not a prohibited use.
And the question on the ag was, was good because, uh, the PUD and the application calls out that, uh, they will continue, uh, for the immediate future, at least on some of the tracks, I think especially Track Four, that it would remain in some kind of ag usage and they'll get to keep either all or a portion of their designation as agricultural related to, uh, property assessment for a certain time period per state law, so. Um, I just want people to know that you, you could keep seeing hay and irrigation out on a portion of that for, uh, some time.
Okay. Um, since Doug is here with us, I mean.
Yes.
Are you okay with language excluding marijuana growth or marijuana storage or what do you, I mean, I don't know how you guys were thinking?
You know, we were pretty specific about the permitted uses in each of these own categories and we did not include that in, in the zoning categories that we proposed. So, you know, by definition, we tried to use, um, uses that were in the code. So if you want to see what these uses are, the, the line, the, the definition section of your code describes them. We did not include marijuana, um, so it's not in there by definition and it's not in there by use. So, um, I, I suppose if there's a prohibition that, that you're proposing to include, I, I don't see why that would change anything, um, from what we've proposed right here, but, um, we were not proposing it in, in the use categories.
As our attorney said, our status has been that if it's not, if PUDs don't, aren't allowed, um, so. We're getting some chat messages coming through there. I'm not sure what he said before absolutely, but something was on there, okay.
I think he's on board, yeah.
Yeah, that's what Mitchell said, um. I'm okay with prohibiting marijuana.
Okay.
Okay.
Um. Another question I had was on ADUs in the LRM, of being allowed in the LRM zone district. Um, I just don't know how, as far as planning goes, those would be approved at building permit time? I'm just looking at this from the side of potential, the potential number of residents that could live there. If we have fifty homes that have fifty ADUs, we're looking at way more.
Density.
Density than fifty single-family homes with no ADUs, which would make an impact on potential on parklands that are required.
Also water usage and all that.
Water usage, yeah, so, yeah. And while I'm perfectly okay with it being in there, I just don't know if it's, you know, a, a limit, a minimum residential size to have an ADU or.
So in the LRM zone district, there are, um, there are sixteen lots. So there are kind of eight on e- each side of the, of the event center, uh, zone district. So, uh, so if there were ADUs, there would be, there would be an additional sixteen units versus, versus fifty, you know.
Alright.
So, so I mean, the intent being that, um, um, if they go to single-family uses, then there's the opportunity for ADU. If it goes, so it's a mixed-use zone district of residential and lodging. If it goes to lodging, then it's lodging, if it goes to residential, then there's an opportunity for ADUs.
Yeah, I just, I, I made an assumption that there were a certain number of residential units that were allowed.
Right.
And, you know, that was the max, whether you wanted to have eight with ADUs or sixteen single families. That's how I interpreted it, but good question again.
So with that, with that in mind though, does that really have any significant impact on the density amount of livable space there as it relates to how much park space would need to be dedicated to the town?
It would be a small amount, but, you know, theoretically, sixteen single-family homes could have sixteen ADUs, so. You're gonna have, you could have another sixteen, uh, I'd just say twenty-four people because they all don't have two, but some of them have one and a half, so, uh, if it maxed out like that, you'd have up to twenty-four extra people.
Which I don't know if it would change that much.
It's not a huge amount, I suppose, but it's a good question.
But to clarify your question too, you know, the, the, the park space, um, the parkland dedication beyond kind of what we've discussed with the trails and all of that type of stuff. So the, the math is you kind of deduct that stuff out of the total parkland dedication and then there's X amount of square feet or acres of parkland that's required per, you know, per person essentially. And so if you have ADUs at two and a half people per residence, then, then, then that's the math, you know. So I, I, I mean, that's kind of how it all calculates out.
Maybe the point was that wasn't calculated out originally with the plan, you know, when we kind of negotiated all that. So I think maybe just a clarification on, you know, when that actually comes to the town in terms of like you said, whether it's, you know, when it's being permitted or when you guys make a decision as far as what's actually gonna be there.
Okay.
I mean, gosh, I don't know, somebody would have to do the math to even see what the difference in the spaces, yeah.
Potentially be.
But we have the math, we can do it.
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, it's, it's a.
Yeah.
We can calculate that one.
Okay.
It could be a fee in lieu of, you know.
Right, or, or we have the opportunity for fee in lieu of.
Yeah, that's, yeah, yeah, okay.
But nonetheless, we can, we can, we can clarify that.
Okay.
Um. And then I had, I don't know, I always look at parking and I know this parking meets our code. But if you have a two-bedroom apartment, there's a good chance you're having two people live there that are gonna drive and only regard to have one parking space. It just seems like every multifamily complex never has enough parking and you see people parking on neighboring streets. Um. You know, I would, I, I know it meets our code and it's late in the discussion. You know, I think, I'm, I would personally be in favor of a two-bedroom unit requires two parking spaces and a three-bedroom requires two and a half. I know it takes up a lot of, parking spots aren't small. But when you go through a development and it's a two-lane road, cars parked on every side and you're trying to squeeze two cars down a narrow, narrow road, I would prefer that instead of getting into that situation, we make enough parking spaces for people to get off the street.
You know, and maybe one of the considerations to that is, you know, to your original introduction, I think for the lodging, we went down from requiring one and a half spaces to one.
One point five to one, yeah.
You know, so there was a little bit of, you know, give there versus, you know, and then coming back towards the, um, you know, the actual multifamily of, you know, long-term residents there, having some additional parking.
And I definitely think the one-to-one is good for, for lodging.
You can, yeah, you can change that, but more important, you know, it's not too late, you know, you're, it's still in the process. And sometimes this is what, sometimes things get tweaked until right before the vote. Um, I, a lot of times I've seen the residential geared towards the size of the unit, multifamily, and you hit a certain limit and then it bumps up basically half space because things average out. But I looked at this, uh, area as being close to the river and I was trying to go with the town code because I thought that would produce a little bit less asphalt. That's a, you know, that's a, a personal and professional thought, but if you feel it needs more parking, you can certainly add it.
I would agree with the need for more parking, specifically, I think, the two-bedroom requiring two spaces. The three-bedroom going up to two and a half, I, I don't know, I, we could probably discuss that a little bit more. I don't know that a three-bedroom versus a two-bedroom unit specifically gonna have that need. I'm thinking maybe they just have one or two more kids, if you will, that maybe aren't driving. But, you know, in the, in the spirit of what we're talking about, having enough parking space, but then also bringing Mark's point in of, you know, not having it just a giant asphalt parking lot. Maybe there's something there as far as the three-bedroom goes, but the two-bedroom to me makes a lot of sense to have two parking spaces.
Yeah, I'd be fine with that, you know, leave the three-bedroom alone and have, make the two-bedroom two spaces.
I'm fine with that.
You too.
Yeah, I'm there with that.
Because I live in a neighborhood that parking is definitely an issue and, you know, with people parking behind people's cars and all kinds of other things that are not okay.
Yeah, um, the one thing I might have to check in with is, you know, Dennis Caruth has been kind of the head of, it's kind of the Phase One lot. And I know he's got a building and a site plan and he's been utilizing the town standards and thus what we utilized here for the PUD guide, so. You know, in terms of, um, in terms of what we're looking at for the rest of the project, we haven't caught, kind of gotten to that level of detail. So I'm, I almost feel like I need to, before making a commitment to you guys, or maybe it's a discussion point now and I can check in with Dennis and just kind of see where that's at.
That's fine, yeah, that's all.
I know, I know based on what he's been doing, he has some standards, well, he's been utilizing these standards for his, for his, his Phase One plan. So I, I really do kind of need to check on that.
Okay, that's fine, yeah.
Okay.
No, we're not writing anything in stone tonight, so.
No, good, good discussion, yeah.
Yeah. Um. Took care of that one, and then I had, uh, I just put short-term rentals down on my list. I mean, there's a, I know we have a, a lodging residential area. I, I'm really in favor of making that clear, what's lodging and what's residential. We've had this discussion about, you know, if they build these sixteen homes as short-term rentals, then that's like a sixteen-unit hotel that we're, we're potentially not getting lodging taxes off of. I don't know, it's just one of those things, short-term rentals is that, is a big gray area right now in this entire valley of.
I guess my expectation would be, and I guess we figure out how to, how to deal with this, is that if it, if it is short-term rentals, then it's lodging.
Yeah.
You know, so if it's, I, I guess I could see a circumstance where maybe over time, if there was, this project started as lodging and converted it sometime in the future to, to single-family for sale units, then, then those wouldn't be able to be short-term rented. But if it is, if it is lodging, because it is a mixed-use zone district, then it, then, then it's lodging. It would allow short-term rentals, so.
Right.
That's what I thought would allow short-term rentals to, that lodging residential district by the event center. And if it was used as short-term rental, you know, I thought the lodging tax would apply.
Apply.
I'm not sure, I haven't gotten into your, your, your lodging stuff.
Without knowing if these sixteen, I mean, say these sixteen lots, they could potentially be single families, they could potentially be lodging. Um, I don't know how we can differentiate it, it CO, whether it's a lodging establishment or a, a single-family residence.
Well, I think someone, you know, you just look at the ads and if you see unit four with different people in it every month and it's up, it's up for, um, it's on the internet, hey, it's a short-term rental, pay your tax. That, that, that's what I assumed. I thought, you know, think of a small edition of Hilton Head or something, you know, some are occupied full-time and some of them are.
Right, yeah.
You live there six months and you're short-term rental at some point.
I just wanted to be clear going forward that we know what's, what's what, I guess.
Yeah, I wonder, you mean, well, you had mentioned at CO, but I would think that we would maybe even see it much before that, you know, as they come in either for their permits to build, you know, or their approval for the, you know, the, the built, the plan, right? But you're not talking about like the actual zoning, you're just talking about some language that states that they have to tell us what it is?
I'm just thinking if it, I mean, if they, if they build sixteen homes and they're free-market homes potentially and Bob buys one and Bob decides to turn it into a short-term rental.
Yeah.
Now we have to deal with.
Bob and his short-term rental.
Bob and a short-term rental.
I mean.
Wouldn't I go back to this discussion?
That's how I looked at it, you know, and I thought sixteen, there aren't that many.
I just think this is a, a potential point where we can make it clear so we're not trying to chase people down that we'll know what's coming beforehand, but I guess it could potentially, if it's a single family, they sell it to somebody else and they force a rental, they go back in the same thing, so.
I mean, I look at it, it's not, hi, I'm building a residence and I'm gonna live there. I think it's, that project's gonna be out there hopefully fifty, a hundred years and that's gonna change over time. And you know what?
Right.
Short-term rentals may not even be in vogue ten years from now, who, who the heck knows, I don't know.
Maybe, yeah, I could just, maybe I'm overthinking that one a little.
Keep notes, Doug.
I am. I got Mitchell on the phone and my notes on my computer, so.
Yeah. Alright.
And we did, we do want to let you know that if there are town-wide decisions about short-term rentals, then, you know, w- we know that's a discussion point with town. I think part of the reason that we did the, the, the mixed-use lodging residential was to a- address some of your concerns, you know, that there is, if, if this is indeed a lodging component in something that looks more like a residential structure because it's a small lodge, then it's the lodging component of the, of the mixed-use district.
Right, okay.
So that's, that's the goal.
Cool, okay. Then my other point, I don't know if it, it doesn't make a difference really, I don't think, to anything. Um, but the owner of this property is still listed as Silt Seventy LLC.
Yes.
On the county assessors page.
Far as I know.
Um, at one of the previous meetings, with, on the July eleventh meeting, trustee Klaassen asked Mitchell, who owned the property, and Mitchell replied that he did. So I don't know, and I, I feel like we're, I'm not sure at this point really who we're working with. Are we working with, Dennis Caruth is the owner of the property, is Mitchell the owner of the property? Who's bringing this project forward? It seems like there's something in limbo and I want to make sure that we're setting this appropriately for this parcel.
Right. They have, they, um, there's a contract for, to purchase the property. So, um, you know, Mitchell and Cole have a contract under their LLC to purchase the property from Dennis Caruth's LLC. So, um, so that's, that is the plan, so.
And if, some bizarre reason it falls apart.
If the sale falls apart, yeah.
According to Mitchell, he, in the chat on, we cannot close the transaction until subdivision is approved.
Yeah.
So, so the, the subdivision is providing the parcels that they can purchase. So, so even with the zoning action, we won't have subdivided parcels yet, so the, the clo- the closing can happen after the parcels are planted.
Okay, and I know there's.
I was working under the impression that there was a contract and I assumed it wouldn't be a sale until it was subdivided.
Okay, yeah, I just want to make sure that we're clear who we're.
Yep.
The players in this thing, alright, I know there's a, and maybe not in this agreement, but one of the other agreements, there's the, the death clause that this zoning will still stick to this parcel, correct? I thought I saw that.
That's the way it's written.
It's the way it's written, yeah, so.
Yes, uh-huh, and there are some clauses in there that. Yes, and there are some clauses in there that something happens and the event center has to be built.
The event center.
Per phasing in the, in the plan and some other things.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just don't want to, I mean, we're a long way into this and I don't want to be.
No, things can always, things can always change, as we all know.
Right. That's the only thing, those are all my questions.
Those are good questions.
Other than that, I think it, I mean, answering all those questions, it looks, looks good, it's written. I would be in favor of specifically not allowing marijuana in the language, just so it's super clear, black and white. And then the parking, I, I would be fine with two and two.
Okay.
Pending a discussion.
I'll check in.
With Dennis about what he's got, and I mean, we could even, I'm sure we could break it out into, if we have to. Track one could add specific parking requirements compared to the rest of the development?
You could.
Okay. Now, if he's got a plan already that works well, then maybe we tailor-fit that one tract and then work on the rest of it.
And to support that, that, that's actually the only multifamily residential zone district. The others, the others that would include multifamily or mixed-use, so, so commercial and residential. So, we could tailor something, like you said, to that, to that zone district that might be slightly different than the rest.
Got it.
Okay, I'll check on that.
All right.
I just got a quick question, going back to the parking. Is, uh, street parking gonna be allowed or for guest parking overnight? Or is there gonna be a place for guest parking? I mean, I'm just curious, but, you know, if you get a lot of guests, is, is, is there street parking gonna be allowed overnight?
I don't think we, I don't know that we have standards that are wide enough for street parking.
If you get a lot of guest parking, I'm, you know, I'm just trying to think of.
Event center parking, we'll have, um, commercial parking, which may not be full at night for residents.
That can be used for guest parking.
You know, may not be occupied.
And I'm just thinking about all the guest parking.
So there, so between the event center parking and the commercial parking and, uh, you know, there's different times kind of for each of those things. I think there will be parking that allows a little bit of overlap or sharing on the project versus putting people in the street.
And for streets, you know, what would look like normal streets, I'd wait until I saw them designed and.
Right, yeah.
And, doesn't make sense.
Right.
Yep.
Good.
I don't have anything else.
This is listed as a public notice, it's supposed to be a public hearing.
It's a public hea- continue public hearing, or a public hearing, yes.
Do you have anything else you'd like to add, Doug, before we open up the public hearing? Um, no. Okay. Any other comments by the board before we open up the public hearing? Okay. Uh, the time is now seven thirty-six PM and I will open up the public hearing in regards to, uh, the first reading of ordinance number thirteen, series twenty-two. Persons deciding to make a public comment on this agenda item, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program. Or, she, do we have any phone calls or emails in regards to this agenda item?
No, I did not hear from anyone, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I don't have any raised hands.
Thank you. Would anyone from the public like to speak in regards to this agenda item? Hmm, all right. Okay, uh, this is just the first reading, we'll have one more reading, so. Oh, yeah, come on, if you.
Mike said yes, he would.
Oh, you would?
Yes, I will, we had a brief discussion about this. My name is Michael Bertow, I live at six seventy-five North Seventh Street in Silk, Colorado. I'm glad that the attorney and the, uh, town manager are online. I'd like to know if there's any reason why I should or should not be limited in any of my comments on this project, being that I'm a recently appointed planning and zoning commissioner for the town of Silk.
See if Michael's there.
Mr. Mayor, can I clarify what he said, I can't, we're gonna do the minutes.
You want us to maybe speak to Mike?
Do you want to sit near Mike?
Not a problem. Uh, what I said was I was glad to have the, uh, town attorney and the town manager on board to see if there was any limitations on any of my comments, being that I'm a newly appointed planning and zoning commissioner for the town.
Well, you are free to make comments as a public citizen. I'm assuming you weren't on the PNC when the PUD was presented to the PNC for its consideration. I guess I would note that if your comments evidence the inability to be impartial, you may be setting yourself up for having to disqualify yourself for future meeting. But you're, you know, as a citizen of Silk, you're entitled to make comments on, uh, matters, uh, subject to public hearings.
Thank you, Mr. Sawyer. My comments will be brief. One thing that hasn't been mentioned tonight is the, uh, river parcel, is that parcel number nine?
Yeah.
Uh, the large island.
Oh, the, that's eight, isn't it?
The island is eight.
The island is eight, and eight is where I would like to direct my comments. Uh, being that I see, from what I gather, it is a natural wetlands created by the river. I wonder why the developer needs to continue to control that and why shouldn't that be in more of the public domain, such as, uh, given to the River District or to Nature Conservancy or to, uh, state wildlife organizations, rather than being held in private hands. I just wonder why the, uh, uh, I wonder where the need is for this development to own that property. And I would just like to see that property protected in perpetuity, and those are my comments.
Okay. Okay, any other further public comments? Okay, uh, the time is now seven thirty-nine PM and I will close the public hearing in regards to the first reading of ordinance number thirteen, series twenty-two, um, and open up to further discussion by the board or a motion.
No further discussion.
I can make a motion, I guess. I will make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number thirteen. Yep, yeah, this ordinance number thirteen, series twenty-two. Do we need to do the other old thing? Or do you want, I don't mind.
No, we did have those changes that we.
Oh, yes, with the, with the parking change and the marijuana change included.
And then the whereas that needs to.
I think he said we can fix that.
Yes, they can. Michael and I may tweak that.
Okay. Uh, so we have a motion by trustee Clausen to approve the first reading ordinance number thirteen, series twenty-two, with the, uh, marijuana, uh, prohibited and the parking changes. Anyone like to second?
Second.
Okay, and that motion has been now seconded by trustee Flores. Alls in favor?
Aye.
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 Alls opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay.
Cool.
All right.
See you next time, thanks.
Thank you.
See you, Doug, thank you.
Couple weeks.
Yeah.
Uh, the next item on the agenda is resolution number fourteen, series twenty-two. A resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Town of Silk, Colorado, to opt out of the Colorado Paid Family and Medical Leave Insurance Program. This is an action item, it has been requested to have a continuance, and I will turn this over to Administrator Lehman or Treasurer Tucker if they need to make any further comments.
Don't think any further comments are necessary, we'll straighten this all out next time.
All right, Mr. Mayor, make a motion to continue resolution number fourteen, series twenty-two to the meeting on August twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two.
I'll second.
All right, uh, motion by Mayor Protem not to continue the resolution number fourteen, series twenty-two to the August twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two Board of Trustees meeting. The motion was seconded by trustee Clausen, alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alls opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We're gonna let, uh, Trey jump in here with the Panoramic Mesa update.
All right, for those of you that don't know, Panoramic Mesa is a subdivision northwest of town. There are nineteen residents on this subdivision. They are currently under a drinking water enforcement order from Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. As part of that, they have to start coming up with alternative uses or alternative sources for water. They are, we are looking into them tying on to the town system. It's not gonna be the cheapest one for them upfront, but in the long run, it's going to be better for them. So the next meeting or so, they will probably be here to show more, um, of what's going on. Currently, we're looking, they would tie on somewhere around Listadia Church and probably run up the county road into Panoramic Mesa. They do have a tank site location up there that could possibly house a hundred and eighty thousand gallon tank for us. But, uh, we're in the preliminaries of it. I'm working with, um, one of the HOA members and then Jeremy Giliam from West Water Engineering on this project. But, uh, I just wanted to make you aware of it in case you heard about it. So hopefully in the next meeting, we'll have a more detailed, um, plan in front of you. Our initial meeting, we sat down and went through all the costs, you know, the, um, tap fees, what they'd be responsible for in running the line up there, which is pretty much all of it. Plus, there's a, a fee for tying on to that Bear Ranch water line that they'll have to pay as well and the associated tap fees and things of that nature.
Do they have water rights that they'd bring to the town?
Um, we're looking at that also, I don't know, um, they were looking into their water rights because they do irrigate with, um, farmers' irrigation water. And the water rights that they're using now are tied to wells. So I don't know if they have water rights or, there is that section of code that talks about money and just for water rights. Which at the moment, we, we would have enough water rights to cover. If they paid a fee, they could pay for part of the Rudy water that we got. But, you know, we're still in preliminary, so we gotta work all this out.
The closest infrastructure is probably up by like the Sunrise Tank?
No, the closest infrastructure is gonna be, um, First Street, Mariloma.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Over there, you know, it's just.
Yeah, Panoramic Mesa, go up to the, go to the top of First Street.
Okay.
Make a left, make your first right, you go into Panoramic Mesa.
Yeah, yeah, gotcha, okay.
That's a, that's nineteen hundred gallons a day more on our water plant, too.
Yeah.
It's a lot that we don't have.
I mean, if we, geez, when do we discuss that? I mean, I feel like we should discuss that before, I don't know, like, they spend all that money figuring out what it's gonna cost to even do it. Like, can we, can we even do it?
Yeah.
Can we provide them water, based on some of the reports that we've gotten with our water plant?
We're gonna have to do calculations on where we're at with the water plant right now.
Okay.
Before we upgrade the water plant, but yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to see it privately owned and maintained myself. That way you guys, you know, aren't fixing however old those pipes are up there.
Well, no, they, um, we talked about the laying in a new infrastructure. If, if it does go through and they build a tank for us, it'll be a new line all the way from where they attached us all the way to the tank.
Yeah, and how many homes did you say?
There's nineteen home lots in that subdivision that.
That's what you were coming up with, yeah.
Obviously it'd be backflowing whatnot to keep anything from up there coming back down into our system.
Well, no, it, they would abandon their system totally.
Right.
And it would be our system. So there wouldn't be a need for backflows because we wouldn't interconnect, we would not interconnect with any of their system up there.
So they're on a community well up there?
They're on, they have two community wells with a tank.
That water?
Is there a way to get that water to us?
Huh?
Is there a way to exchange, get that water down to?
We don't want that water.
Yeah, it doesn't sound like it's very good.
If they're, if they're under an enforcement order, we don't want that water. More than likely, but I will look into that, but I know one of their wells is not producing at all at the moment.
Whoa, yeah.
But it would be totally new infrastructure to a new tank.
Okay.
Except for the service lines to the houses, which.
Are they hauling water to themselves now, or some of them are, or?
No, they're, I don't think they have to haul water yet.
I think they, they are.
They are?
Yeah.
They might be.
They're having the tank filled.
Yeah.
Hauling water, yeah.
Oh, they are filling the tank from us.
So, yeah, I'll just disclose, my parents live in that subdivision.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, just so everyone knows, yeah. But, yeah, they are hauling water to fill the tank.
So they're hauling water from us to fill their tank or from Newcastle or?
Uh, I don't know where it's coming from, but yeah.
Oh, just because it'd be, they're buying both water and hauling.
Well, but I mean.
If they're already getting it here and using it there, it wouldn't put, I mean, you're right.
Yeah, it would be washed because they're already, they're getting it from us anyway.
Yeah, they're still using the.
I guess that would be a question to see where their water hauler is bringing it in from.
Was there any discussion into annexation?
Not at the moment and we don't have anything out that far. I don't know what it would take to annex out there. I mean, what, we'd have to annex the county roads all the way up there?
I'm pretty sure I get it.
I'm not for sure, I'm not for sure how annexation works, but I know we're not touching that property in any way with city limits already.
And currently, town code doesn't allow septic tanks.
Uh, yeah.
So that would be a.
Yeah, they're all on septics up there.
They're all septic up there.
Yeah, yeah, okay, don't worry, yep.
Good tying into our wastewater would be.
If they're gonna dig once, man.
I mean, that's what I was thinking, I mean, if they're gonna do it, like, hit, hook into sewer and.
Run a sewer line up there, too. Yeah.
And that's all.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Trey.
All right, and then I'll turn it over to Jeff for the strategic planning.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, uh, as you, in front of you, you have a strategic plan report we worked on with Dana LeBach, um, you'll recall, uh, over, earlier this year. I had intended for Dana to come back and kind of take another stab at the, uh, at, at narrowing this down and making a, a real strategic plan out of it. Unfortunately, he's become unavailable due to the birth of his new grandchild, so he won't be around for, uh, a while. And so I wanted to get this to you and to let you know that I'm, uh, we'll, we'll talk about this on the fifteenth, which would be our work session, our budget work session, which I know everybody's biting the bed about, uh, next Monday night. And I'll have something for you, which will be sort of a, uh, a draft of what the beginnings of a strategic plan would be based on what I, uh, would boil down out of this. But I would ask you to all, uh, go through this, boil it down, uh, in your own minds and take some notes and let's take, uh, some time next Monday to, uh, to, uh, add, put some flesh on the bones of the work that I do, or just throw it out with the bathwater and start over, it's, that's fine, too. But, uh, we probably need to get started, uh, the things in this, uh, will be germane to our conversations about the twenty-three budget. That's all I have.
Easy enough. Okay.
Oh, and there's the budget calendar right there, Monday, May fifteenth, budget retreat, ordretreat.
May fifteenth.
Yeah, hopefully August fifteenth, not May.
There you go.
Yeah, I was gonna say August fifteenth.
What did I say?
You said hey.
It's okay.
Well, I, I was hoping to get started earlier.
And the retreat, is that at, on a beach somewhere or?
Yeah.
That's Cabo, right?
Cabo.
All right, uh, next up on the agenda is administrator and staff reports, and we'll jump back over to Administrator Lehman.
I don't have anything else to add.
All right, any other staff members? Like to add anything?
Doesn't sound like it.
Doesn't look like it, doesn't sound like it.
Quite a group.
Yes, they are, okay. We'll jump into updates from the board and board comments, and we're gonna start with trustee Clausen tonight.
Um, yeah, first of all, uh, parks look great on Sixteenth Street, is that fence gonna go back eventually?
Yes.
Okay.
The fence will go back up after we get the trail in.
All right, cool.
To help keep soccer balls from going across Sixteenth Street.
Yeah, and then I saw Flying Eagle's been chipping sealed, and I had a question. In one of the cul-de-sacs, there is a couple of cracks and that chip and seal will, is kind of like crack sealed?
We actually, um, we did go up there before they fog coated it
Uh-huh.
and used some road patch on some of them bigger cracks.
Oh, okay.
And then we got that in there and then they fog coated it also, we should be good to go.
All right, cool, nice. And, um, yeah, and the Ninth Street paving, I didn't know if we had an update on that.
Not yet, I've been on vacation and, um, we'll have something by the next meeting.
Okay, and I was just.
We're trying to get the timing to get them back in here.
Yeah. Yeah, it'd be nice to redo the whole thing, just because maybe I should've made a comment earlier, but, you know, when they tore up all the old asphalt, I walked up and down there that night and, you know, one of the cops, cause I couldn't, I was trying to remember in my mind how the water lines went at Ninth and Grand and they're like, hey, can we help you? And I said, no, I was trying to figure out this, and they're, they're like, okay, have, have a good night, but I walked up and down there and as I was walking, I could feel the soft spots when I was walking up there. And then I'm thinking to myself, there, there's no way they're gonna pave this, just cause it's too soft, you know? And then I was surprised when it was paved, so I guess my biggest question is, you know, why on earth would the paving company, you know, if I knew it was soft, why on earth would they still pave it if, if it was that soft? So that's just, and, you know, it's not, you know, directed at you, it's more or less directed at the paving company, why on earth they would pave knowing that the roadbed, you know, wasn't, wasn't firm? So.
See how it plays out.
Yeah.
Trustee Seifert?
Uh, just don't forget, heydays is coming and our farmers markets, um, I was at the last one, there's pretty good turnout, so, uh, band was good and there's a lot of people there, so, everybody had a good time, but heyday is the twentieth, don't forget, show up.
Yep, just like to thank all the members of the PNC board for coming down and spending about an hour and a half chatting with us, really, it's, it's good, so I appreciate you guys, thank you.
Trustee Hanrahan?
Uh, one comment, but one question first, Jeff, any updates on that shop local campaign? That was the group that was in front of us two meetings ago?
No, nothing yet.
Okay.
Uh, and then a quick.
Thanks, yeah, thanks for bringing it up, I'll, I'll double check on that.
Yeah, cause I, I, I'm, maybe I'm misremembering it, but I thought they wanted to get started on the, the actual campaign soon. Anyway, um, and, and then a, a quick thanks to Silt PD and Chief Kite. Uh, it sounds like the patrols over at Silt Island Park have in- increased and I've been told, and, and these are their words, not mine, that locals are seeing fewer druggies over there. So that's, that's a good thing and, and I know I brought it up a couple of meetings ago, so thank you. That's it.
Uh, just quick thanks to PNC for all the work you guys do and come, come here, too, and that's it.
Trustee Britton?
Uh, just with regards to heydays, um, obviously it's August twentieth. Um, we have the, uh, cornhole tournament and the horseshoe tournament, you can register for either of those in advance, um, come to town hall, they have the, um, things for that. Uh, the horseshoe, the cornhole tournament will be limited to thirty teams, horseshoes, there's no thoughts on limiting it yet, cause we have, doesn't have quite as much participation. Um, but we will, uh, just looking forward to having a real good time for that.
Awesome. Uh, before heydays gets here, August twelfth is the concert up at the Pavilion, the Van Halen Tribute Band. That says Friday, so everyone come out and hit that one. And, uh, yeah, thank you, PNC, for coming tonight, it's always good to have those meetings. And, uh, that's all I've got.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, we got a motion by Mayor Protem not to adjourn the meeting, we'll give it seconded to trustee Britton, all. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Alls opposed? Motion still carries unanimously. All right, thank you, everybody.